Tune in Saturday, February 29th, from 10:30 in the morning until 6:00 at night, for WMAQ TV's coverage of the recent mayoral election, to be cable cast on Channel 19 in its entirety. This cable cast will be followed at 6:00 PM with a live media review hosted by Channel 5's Dick Kay. Dick will be joined by a panel of print and broadcast journalists, and open phone lines will provide the opportunity for citizen comment. Tune in to Channel 19 for this historic event. Brought to you by the Chicago Bar Association, in cooperation with the Chicago Access Corporation.
Apparently, there's a tussle going on in the City Hall chambers.
Well, Carol, uh, things have apparently turned a little ugly here. We don't know exactly what's going on. Some people from the audience who were standing and waving those dollar bills, apparently are being ejected. Not because they were waving dollar bills, but apparently they started throwing something, and, uh, one of those involved in the fracas is Alderman Terrace Gabinski, from the 32nd Ward, who, uh, was perhaps a candidate himself, and, uh, also has been supporting Alderman Sawyer. Uh, Gabinski, you see, just walking around back here in the back. Gabinski has been demanding the ouster of someone. Apparently, someone threw something at him or said something to him, and, uh, and, uh, uh, so... Or may have thrown something at someone else, and Gabinski was asking the police to eject them. And apparently, that's what's being done. Uh, Danny Davis, the alderman from the 24th Ward, went over and tried to calm them down, uh, 27th Ward, that is, tried to calm them down, asked them to, to be a little quiet, settle down, uh, but it's still going on. And Danny Davis is back in the back now. You can see him, perhaps, back with the, by the, uh, uniformed police officer with, probably the sergeant back there, and he's trying to quiet the crowd. These are obviously Evans supporters, Danny Davis urging them to be quiet. Uh, I don't know whether they've ejected anyone yet or not, um, it, it, uh, I can't tell at this point. The policemen are still there, they're still trying to restore order back there. Uh, a lot of aldermen still standing there. Alderman Gabinski is now back here on the floor, watching from behind. Terry, uh, let me see if I can get him over here. Terry, Terry, come here. Uh, get on Alderman Gabinski, if you will.
We are not standing on ceremony, obviously.
I will pass that by now.
Well, let me see if I can get anybody over here. Alderman Gabinski is pretty hot. Terry, come here. Here, here comes Alderman Terrace Gabinski. Terry, I wonder if you can tell me what happened?
Well, I mean, we have quietly and very patiently dealt with the crowd. They have a right to be here all day, but just two minutes ago, as I turned around, uh, one of the demonstrators took a handful of quarters and threw them at the city council, at Shaniza Butler, and a number of other, other, with a group of quarters. And I wanted that man thrown out, and he was. Of course, this group now is claiming police brutality. They should have been thrown out any time they do anything like this. I haven't said a word. I've been very, we've been here all day. But when they begin to go overboard and throw things into the city council chambers, then either should leave, or all should go out.
And you, you can see, Alderman, can I, hang on just one second. Uh, earlier tonight, uh, we noticed that you had, also had some securities, uh, details assigned to you, and they wanted them moved, is that right?
No, that was not a problem.
Well, what was that?
That was nothing. I was kidding with them all evening. We had some fun, we gave them their hats, and then this group of people were fine most of the evening. I don't know, maybe temperatures are beginning...
Alderman Figaro objected to them sitting behind you, behind him.
But that was fine. But that was fine. So I just said, "Go ahead and sit on the other end."
You did ask him to move, that's right.
Right. Dick, would you also ask him?
All evening, everybody very, very patiently dealt with each other's situation.
But, Dick, would you also ask him?
I think when you reach a point in the evening, when maybe people forget where they are and what they're doing, things have to change.
Alderman, let me ask you one more question. Uh, we just heard that, uh, one of, one of, uh, Tim Evans supporters said, he's heard that you are emerging as a candidate now. Are you, are you back in the race? Are you looking for votes again?
It's awfully nice to have people say nice things about you.
Wait a minute, Ron Majors has a question for you, Alderman.
You asked it. Yeah, you can just wave him goodbye, 'cause you asked the question, Dick, and we're not gonna get an answer.
We didn't get any answer, you noticed that, and, uh, you got a big smile out of him. He, of course, is Congressman Dan Rostenkowski's alderman up there, a very influential congressman, and we are told, uh, we have heard that Congressman Rostenkowski might relinquish his 32nd Ward committeeman's job in favor of Alderman Gabinski. Now, uh, Mayor Orr is attempting to restore some order. Can we get on, uh, Mayor Orr, if you will? He, here he is, let's, let's listen, let's listen. Let's listen. Well, he's, he's standing there, he started this...
Dick, tell you what, well, why don't you signal us when...
We are, here we go. Here we go.
Friends in the audience, we do not want to have to clear the chambers. Those of you who insist on violating our rules, I ask you very patiently to please be seated. If I could ask the aldermen also to take their seats. We'll hopefully be ready to go in just a moment, if people would please take their seats.
Well, that's good news from Mayor David Orr, who says we'll be ready to go in a moment as soon as everybody takes their seat. They have to calm down the people who were standing after the disturbance in the gallery, and as you noted, the aldermen themselves are not in the seats yet.
On the, on the issue of that disturbance, we understand that Art Norman, who was just outside the chambers, may have some more information for us on what that was about, Art.
Exactly, Carol. One of the gentlemen in the, in the public gallery threw some quarters in the direction of the alderman sitting in the rear of this room. He was quickly ejected, wrestled, uh, by several police officers at the rear of the room, and ejected, physically carried right out of the council chambers. One of the people looking on was Northside community activist Marion Stamps, and, uh, you saw what happened?
It did not, they actually did not justify what happened, what the police did. They had no business throwing that man against the wall and being that mad. But I think the attitude of the policemen is conducive of what's going on in this city council. You know, the policemen are mad, and they are out of control. The people are mad, and they're out of control. So you aren't gonna get anything but that kind of negative response, anyway.
Okay, and I understand that you're backing Evans over Sawyer? Can you sell Sawyer if you had a week off to discuss it?
No, the people want Tim Evans, and the people ought to get what the people want. I am supporting Tim Evans, 'cause that's what the people want. And that's what the people said once they realized that the mayor was dead, and he was not coming back. The people want Tim Evans, 'cause they believe in him. They believe that he will, in fact, carry on the mayor's program.
You're leading several chants from the back of the city council chambers. Um, will that work?
Whatever we want to work at this point will work. I think the one thing that everybody got to understand, that we are the people who elected Herr Washington in 83.
Art, we're gonna have to interrupt you if you can hear us. We have to go back down to the council floor, because Mayor David Orr is calling that motion for adjournment, and we don't wanna miss it. Let's go back to the floor.
In fact, they are, they're taking a roll call now. They're taking a roll call now, if you can come over here. Um, the motion was made by Alderman Lawrence Bloom. Apparently, they're tired of waiting. It has to be a majority vote, however. This is the roll call.
We can hear it, Dick, I think, though.
Fifty aldermen, we're up to the 24th Ward. Alderman Bill Henry is being asked for his vote now. This is a motion to adjourn by Alderman Lawrence Bloom.
But it's also a test of strength.
I'm not sure whether it is or not, Ron, or whether people are just tired of this.
Well, if, if...
This is, this is Lawrence Bloom.
But if they wanna stop this, if they wanna push a vote, they can do that.
If Sawyer's supporters wanna push a vote, it has to be now.
Um, they need to get their people back to the floor. They don't have them all here, including Sawyer.
That seems to express what Alderman Sawyer may want, since he's not on the floor.
That's the, uh, that's the 50 Ward. Now, they may have to go back for a couple, and they may have to verify the vote.
Now, Alderman Orr will announce the results very quickly here.
Alderman Rush votes aye. Alderman Beavers votes aye.
Well, Beavers is one of Alderman Sawyer's supporters, and he just voted aye.
This is the vote to determine whether we're through for the night, or whether we'll go through some other procedures, and maybe even get through a vote for mayor. Just takes a simple majority, you'll hear the clerk report it to the mayor.
Alderman Sawyer, we should point out, isn't here. Alderman Carter was one of Jean Sawyer's, uh, supporters. She just voted aye for adjournment. Looks like they're going to adjourn, uh, and it does not look like, uh, any of those others. Here, here's the vote. As soon as the clerk hands it up to, uh, well, Bill Henry is on the phone down here. Here it goes.
The roll call is 20 ayes, 25 mayes. The motion dies.
No adjournment.
Will the audience please be seated?
They will not adjourn, they will be seated. You can see Corporation Council Judson Minor just on the other side of Mayor David Orr, with a wry smile in his...
President, I wish the clerk to read the following declaration, which it is with sad heart that I present to the clerk, but it is a declaration that I'd like to have read and passed by roll call vote.
Uh, this is Burton Nateris from the 42nd Ward. I have no idea what this resolution is. I told you there would be some things we couldn't even imagine yet.
First, please read the resolution.
Well, let's listen to the resolution.
Whereas Harold Washington, up to and including the 25th day of November in 1987, was duly elected...
Uh, what's your point of order, Alderman?
And I, I'm sorry, most of the audience and the aldermen have missed the beginning. I would ask that the clerk...
Okay, well, the clerk, please start from the beginning.
Whereas Harold Washington, up to and including the 25th day of November in 1987, was duly elected and qualified mayor of the city of Chicago. And whereas Harold Washington died on the 25th day of November in 1987, by means whereof a vacancy now exists in the office of mayor of the city of Chicago. And whereas Illinois revised statutes, Chapter 24, Section 3-4-6, mandates that the city council of the city of Chicago elect one of its members acting mayor of the city of Chicago. And whereas the city council of the city of Chicago hereby desires to fulfill its statutory mandate and to immediately proceed with the election of one of its members as acting mayor of the city of Chicago, now therefore be it declared by the city council of the city of Chicago that a vacancy now exists in the office of mayor of the city of Chicago by reason of the death of Harold Washington. That the city council of the city of Chicago does now proceed pursuant to Illinois revised statutes, Chapter 24, Section 3-4-6, to elect one of its members as acting mayor, to hold that office of acting mayor until the vacancy shall be filled in accordance with law. That pursuant to said statutory mandate, the city council of the city of Chicago does hereby declare that the procedure for the election of the acting mayor shall be in the following manner. One, the name of a candidate shall not be submitted in nomination without the written consent of the candidate. Two, the meeting shall only consider the election of an acting mayor. No other substantive proposal shall be introduced. Three, any member of the city council may nominate a city council member who has consented as a candidate for acting mayor. Four, the written consent of the candidate shall be filed with the city clerk prior to nomination. Five, after the nominations are closed, the clerk shall call the roll, beginning with the first Ward. Six, a majority vote of all of the aldermen present will be necessary to elect an acting mayor. Then, if no candidate receives a majority vote on the first ballot, balloting will continue until a candidate does receive a majority vote.
Now for a roll call vote on the declaration which explains the rules under the statute. Uh, did the alderman have copies of the resolution? Can we get those copies real quickly?
Well, I don't see why they can't just walk out to the Xerox machine and run off 50.
You see, the aldermen have to have copies of the resolutions. That's usually what they require.
And the resolution, Dick, simply says, "Let's do it now, let's declare that the office is vacant, and let's do it this way."
Sets out the rules for doing it, how they do it. Uh, it will have to be, this resolution, by the way, will have to be approved, and I just saw Bill Henry and, uh, Alderman Beavers, uh, leave the city council chambers, and they left by the door over here on the east end, and that could mean that they're going upstairs, because that's the direction to the third floor where Alderman Sawyer is.
If they do it this way, it could be an all-night thing, because they're talking about a candidate giving a written consent, then filing a statement with the city clerk saying, "Yes, I'll be a candidate." Once they get all those files, then having the first ballot, and continuing until there is a majority.
Well, I think that they could do that rather quickly. I think that all he has to do is probably, uh, sign his name to a piece of paper. They probably have some of those prepared, if they really wanna be a candidate, and, uh, and, uh, I think that, uh, you know, those signed documents that we've seen floating around with the, uh, whatever you wanna call it, I said 27 names of support for Alderman Sawyer, uh, those could be, uh, I guess, statements of candidacy, if he has signed it and said, "I wanna be a candidate."
Well, then, we still have, we still have the issue that Alderman Sawyer is not down on that floor. Wasn't there for the roll call? I mean, there would seem to be some recalcitrance on his part about being a piece of this process. Would you not agree?
Well, I, yes, and, and on the other hand, maybe he just wanted to cool it, I said before. Perhaps what we've seen is something of a stalling action, although I do believe he is very concerned about, uh, what's going on in the community.
His action may be a stalling action, but the action of Alderman Nateris is clearly to force us to a vote tonight, and to keep the council there until they've got someone elected.
I think that's a significant move by Alderman Burton Nateris. Alderman Burton Nateris from the 42nd Ward is, uh, is, uh, really the alderman of George Dunn, the chairman of the Cook County Democratic Organization, president of the county board.
And it was George Dunn who had earlier said, in the original negotiations, he did not think it was fair, he would not support, and he would not accept a white mayor based on the legacy of Mayor Harold Washington.
That's exactly what he told me, and, and...
Our waiting for the copies are just about here. Again, can I ask everyone in the audience to please sit down and be quiet?
David Orr admonishing the audience. Uh, as you were saying, uh, George Dunn told me that, yes, that's exactly what he did, and some aldermen told me that because of George Dunn, uh, the white alderman couldn't put it together for a white alderman. And, uh, I mean, Larry Bloom perhaps could have had it, but some white alderman also said he was unacceptable. In fact, Alderman Mel said publicly the other day, "You gotta be kidding."
But Dick, what we seem to be seeing here, we presume it's the hand of George Dunn, but it's certainly gotta be done in concert with that coalition that exists around Eugene Sawyer. Would you not agree?
I, yes, I think it does, because Nateris was one of the signers, uh, and, uh, he was one of the signers, and we're told Jean Sawyer's coming to the floor now, uh...
We may get a vote. I think it was significant to note that we had 25 votes against adjournment. There were 25 aldermen on that floor at this very moment who seemed to be expressing the view, "Let's do something now."
Well, that's all they need, what they need, one more vote, and they can elect a mayor. Here comes Jean Sawyer now, coming, uh, coming to the floor. You can see him, perhaps, um, I can't, but I'm sure you can.
We can.
We can, Dick, we can see him making his way through the back hallway.
And, uh, Jean Sawyer coming down to the floor. This is only the second time tonight that he's been here, but Burton Nateris had that resolution prepared. He was ready to hand that in, as you saw, it was prepared.
Seems to clearly be part of a strategy sometimes.
And now, members of the city council, and a few people in the audience applauding Jean Sawyer, a 6th Ward alderman who has been up on the third floor, now, crowd booing.
Accompanied by a police officer, all the way to his seat.
You can hear the audience's reaction. Most of the applause coming from the aldermen, I should say.
A clear evidence of the tension on that floor, and of the threats that have been made. There is a uniformed police officer who is staying with Eugene Sawyer.
And I, and, and uniformed police officers...
In plain clothes, we might add.
Yes, and, and uniformed police officers out in the audience out there. I'm never concerned about this. I mean, this has been a rather tumultuous situation, and could turn ugly. Here's Alderman Sawyer still standing, he may wish to say something. As soon as David Orr can get the crowd under control. Bill Henry handing, uh, some kind of resolution. Maybe that's, uh, maybe that's what Sawyer has to sign, unless he's already signed it.
Dick, we've, we've all watched a lot of politics together, and, uh, this, this moment for drama matches any of them that I can remember in recent years.
I was, and he's working right now, talking to the press, roadie.
We don't know what Eugene Sawyer is going to say, if anything. We don't know if there will be an adjournment. There might even be a new mayor.
Here's a point of order by Larry Bloom.
Mr. President, my point of order is as follows. We have been presented with a declaration which has not in any way, does not in any way comport with the notice and the call of this meeting. And pursuant to the municipal code, Section 4-1, it provides as follows: "That every such call for a special meeting of the city council shall specify the purpose or purposes for which any such special meeting is called, and the business at such special meetings shall be limited to such specified purpose or purposes. And the call for this meeting was for the sole and only purpose of electing an acting mayor. And, Mr. President, I believe that this declaration is not in order, and we cannot consider the matter at this time."
First parliamentary procedure. Here comes the first parliamentary test. David Orr will have to rule.
Can I have the cooperation of the council as well as the audience? Can I have... Alderman Terrace, you're out of order. I am going to rule on Alderman Bloom's point. Municipal Code, Section 4-1, does say, "Every such call shall specify the purpose or purposes for which any special meeting is called, and the business at which such special meetings shall be limited to such specified purposes or purposes." Therefore, the chair would rule that the point of order is well taken.
They will appeal the ruling of the chair.
Alderman Nateris, I'll be glad, you don't have to yell. Alderman Nateris, if you all be quiet, these are the audience, you have the floor.
Mr. President, the reason I am shouting is the audience is so loud in the back, I cannot hear you. Now, I apologize.
Could the audience, please, be careful, this is important.
I, I appeal the ruling to the chair, and here is my argument with regard to that ruling. The purpose of this meeting is to elect an acting mayor. This declaration sets out the rules under the statute for electing that acting mayor, and therefore, it is within the purview of the call. It is perfectly legal, it's perfectly logical. If we do not present to you such a declaration, creating a vacancy, if we do not set out the rules of procedure, such as how we nominate, how we close the nominations, and the fact that you need a majority vote, we do not have any rules within which to proceed. All this is, is a reiteration of the statute, and I appeal the ruling of the chair on this point of order. By a roll call vote.
Thank you, Alderman.
Now, you're going to get a roll call vote.
Are you ready for the vote?
If they have 26 votes.
The vote shall be, shall the ruling of the chair be sustained?
They will overturn the ruling of the chair, and we'll proceed.
Dick, you had asked Mayor Orr if he had planned any fast gavel possibilities. Might we be seeing a fast gavel move? This is the plan?
I don't think so. I think David Orr has said over and over again, he won't permit any chicanery. He's not gonna be a fast gavel. I'm told that he's anxious to turn the gavel over to a mayor who can get on with the work. A budget is pending, and the community development block grant. So much is pending, they have to do the budget by the end of December. I mean, they're in trouble if they don't get it done soon, and Orr wants to get it done.
Dick, do we know on an appeal of the ruling of the chair? Do we now need just 26, or are we back up to 24?
I am told 26 votes, and, uh, the consensus is among even some of Evans supporters that no court would overturn that. Uh, I'm sure there'll be a court challenge, but they feel that no judge would overturn it, not wanting to interfere with the legislative process, or, as stipulated by law.
We could go through a variety of motions, orders, and appeals yet, but it would seem clear that this vote is critical, in that it is a real show of power on those who now wanna proceed.
Well, they can do, let me tell you what else they can do. They can ask for leave to use the last roll call when they appeal. That would mean that they wouldn't have to go through this every time. This might be the real test, and, uh, they wouldn't have to go through this every time. If they've got 26 votes now, they might be granted leave to use...
Listen for the, listen for the vote.
The yeas are 19, the mayes are 30. Uh, the rule of the chair is overruled.
They've got 30 votes.
30 votes.
They've got 30 votes.
Holy cow. That means that Sawyer's...
Here's Tim Evans.
The matters on the floor, please. We wanna maintain the decor. Alderman Evans is recognized.
Point of order. Mr. President, this particular matter is not properly before this body. Under Rule 41, the rule provides that all ordinances, petitions, orders, resolutions, motions, communications, and other propositions shall be referred without debate to an appropriate committee, and only acted upon by the city council at a subsequent meeting, on the report of the committee having the same in charge. Uh, that particular rule, Mr. President, requires that this matter be sent to committee before it can be entertained by the full city council. And following that particular rule, in my view, that the president should, uh, in effect, dictate this particular matter be sent to committee before it can be considered at this time.
They're, they're prepared to this.
What, uh, what committee were you calling for? What committee were you calling for? Rules was called for, that... Matter referred to, one thing at a time, matter referred to the Rules Committee. Yes, Alderman?
I appeal the ruling to the chair, and I make the following argument against that ruling. To rule the way you did would mean that we could not have any special meetings at all. The purpose of this declaration is to set out the specific rules for the carrying on of this special meeting, which was called pursuant to notice. Therefore, this is not an ordinance, this is not a resolution, it's a declaration of rules which must be considered at this special meeting. It would make no sense to send it to committee, because this meeting will then have passed by the time that meeting would be held, and it would be reported out again. The ruling is illogical, and therefore, by a roll call vote, I ask that the ruling be overturned.
Dick?
Yes, uh, Tim Evans is gonna make a point.
President, in response to the comments by Alderman Nateris, he is in error. The, the, the way that you're supposed to respond to this, Mr. President... The only way, Mr. President, this particular matter can be considered is for a motion to suspend the rules. There's been no motion to suspend the rules, Mr. President, and that is what is required. The reason why his particular argument falls is that there's been no motion to suspend the rules for the immediate consideration of the particular resolution. If he wants to, uh, move to suspend the rules, I welcome him to do so. He then will require two-thirds vote in order to have this matter come before us successfully tonight.
Well, now we'll find out. Uh, I suspect that, uh, whatever happens, they'll overturn.
President, I raise a point of order. Under our rules, when you, when you appeal the ruling of the chair, the procedure is as follows. The chair rules. A motion is made to appeal the ruling of the chair. The person who makes that appeal has the right to make an argument without rebuttal. There is no rebuttal to the argument on appealing the ruling of the chair. If you check Roberts' Rules of Order, and you check our own rules, you'll see that is true. This rebuttal was out of order. I ask that we have a roll call vote on my, on my appeal, on the ruling of the chair.
Alderman David Orr, conferring with Leon Dupre, the parliamentarian.
The matter has been sent before the Rules Committee.
David Orr ruling that it went...
I have a right to that appeal.
David Orr ruling that it goes to Rules Committee.
I appeal the ruling of the chair, and I appeal the ruling. I have a right to a roll call on that appeal.
Alderman O'Connor is recognized.
It was my understanding that the act, the, the interim mayor had made statements during the past few days, that when 26 votes were assembled, he would do nothing in that chair to stop the process of making the new mayor. There is an appeal of the ruling of the chair on the floor. Let's proceed with business. If this is going to go to court, let it be so, but let's not try and pervert the system any further.
Mayor Orr has made the ruling. We are going to see what his ruling is. Uh, they may have a point. He is not, apparently not going to recognize the appeal for the ruling of the chair. Uh, the appeal to overturn the ruling of the chair really is what it is, that it goes to Rules Committee. Uh, there's not supposed to be any rebuttal. Uh, one of the gentlemen you see conferring with him now, the black gentleman, is Tim Wright, one of the, uh, late mayor's, uh, uh, city council liaison. Uh, David Orr conferring with Alderman Leon Dupre.
Leon Dupre on the near side, and on the far side of the mayor is Judson Minor, who's the Corporation Council, the city's top attorney, so he's getting advice from left and right.
Leon Dupre of the 5th Ward, an independent alderman in the daily years, who then was a parliamentarian for Jane Byrne, and has gone through a lot of these go-rounds in his long career.
And, uh, usually is right, but, uh, I, I mean, clearly, the mayor cannot say...
He may be right, but he may not keep it out of court, either.
That's true, but, but clearly, the mayor can... But clearly, the mayor cannot say he didn't hear it because he recognized Alderman Nateris. That was a claim that other mayors have made in the past. I didn't hear it, I couldn't hear it. There have been fast gavels. Here's the ruling.
Can we, can we have some order, please? Let me explain the ruling and I think we can proceed. I don't think anyone here, despite the tempers, is trying to subvert anything. There are a different interpretation. I was simply ruling that I thought Alderman Evans was in order and therefore sent the committee and you would have to suspend the rules in order to bring it back from the Rules Committee.
Roll call, sir.
All right, the rule was for.
I ask for a roll call on my appeal of the ruling of the chair.
Okay.
Here we go.
Okay, point of information.
The chair to Alderman Nateris. Alderman, if the president has ruled, if the parliamentarian has advised that that is a proper and correct ruling, through the chair, what is the purpose? What is the sense of going through now with another vote that would clearly be in defiance of all the rules that this body has ever operated under? Every time a new matter comes to the floor, you know that you need a two-thirds vote in order to suspend the rules. So, I'm trying to find out the rationale that my colleague is using.
Danny Davis from the twenty-fourth ward, who was candidate in the mail for mayor. Twenty-ninth, I keep, I'm sorry.
This is a non-debatable issue. We should go to the roll call immediately unless someone can prove me wrong.
That's John Madrick from the thirteenth ward. Now.
Alderman Evans, for what purpose do you rise?
Well, now we have a debate.
Alderman Henry, what purpose do you rise?
Mr. President, Mr. President. Is it in order of the parliamentarian ruling that at this time I could move an adjournment until Friday at 2:00 P.M.? Is that in order?
Well, he said he was gonna do that. Motion to adjourn, I'm told, is always in order. And now we'll find out.
If the council will come to order, we can do business.
And Mr. Alderman Henry, after asking whether he can move for adjournment, it looked like Alderman Burke had to cross all the way across the room to quickly come over and have a quick conversation with him.
Alderman Jabinski also. No, he didn't move to adjourn.
No, he didn't. He asked if it was in order.
Now, Dick, going back to the old fast gavel question here, in refusing to allow Burton Nateris's roll call on the appeal of the ruling of the chair, isn't this a ploy by the chair to get this pushed off until Friday?
No, no other conclusion you can draw. Here's Burke, let's hear what he says.
I'm sure that all of us agree that you have done an absolutely splendid job after the untimely death of Mayor Washington. But I really think that it is in all of our best interests that you rule fairly and that you give Alderman Nateris an opportunity to have a roll call on his appeal of the ruling of the chair. That was the, that was the motion that was before the body, before you recognized Alderman Henry. And there must be, in my humble opinion, a roll call on Alderman Nateris's appeal before you can then entertain another motion.
Okay, I appreciate those remarks, Alderman, but I believe a motion to adjourn is always in precedent. If the motion to adjourn, obviously if it does not pass, then we'll proceed with Alderman Nateris's recommendation. So, I respectfully appeal your ruling.
So, now, Dick, we have two appeals of the ruling of the chair, right?
Well, you can't have two addresses.
This is the kind of quagmire that gets built.
Prevalent, the clerk will take the roll.
This is the kind of quagmire that makes money for attorneys is what this is.
You know, I never really did understand Robert's Rules of Order.
Well, Burke is an expert on them, though, I gotta tell you.
He is a recognized parliamentarian.
And, you know, sometimes, even when he loses, he's correct in making some of the parliamentary assessments.
And on this one, as little as I know about Robert's Rules, it seems.
Listen, Henry, Henry is asking about a vote on Friday. I didn't catch all that. They didn't have his microphone on. But, you know, they'll probably defeat this unless Henry and Shanitha Butler and some of those people. Here we go.
Tillman.
Dick, this is not a motion to adjourn.
No, this is the appeal of the ruling of the chair on the adjournment.
All right.
Caldwell, Shaw.
Well, Caldwell's on.
Verdoliak, Huel, Ferry, Madrick, Burke, Carter, Langford, Streeter, Kellum, Sheehan, Jones, Jesse Evans, Garcia, Kristiniac, Henry, Solis, Gutierrez, Butler, Smith, Davis, Agopian, Figaroa, Jabinski, Mel, Austin, Cutler, Banks, Giles, Giles, Colleton, Lorino, O'Connor, Kuchinsky, Nateris, Isandrea, Hanson, LeVar, Schiller, Schulter, Osterman, Orr, Stone.
There's the fifty. Now, they'll go back and verify these. And both Shanitha Butler and William Henry voted yes.
Alderman Shaw changes from nadiya.
Shaw changed. Well, we.
Sounds, Dick, like we could get adjourned here.
I don't know, though. This is just an appeal of the ruling of the chair, okay?
Yeah, but it might be an index of their willingness to adjourn.
Maybe not.
No?
Maybe not. We don't know.
I don't know.
We'll.
Thank you.
Henry will move to adjourn.
The yeas are twenty-two, the nays are twenty-six. The motion failed.
There you go.
Let us now proceed with Alderman Nateris's.
All right, they will not adjourn.
Request for appealing the ruling of the chair? You've made your request.
I have appealed the ruling of the chair. I ask for a roll call.
Now, I'm confused.
Okay, let me make it.
I am too.
I think they missed a vote.
We're going on, we've appealed the ruling of the chair. The rule was, again, based on rule forty-one, which says, "All ordinances, orders, petitions, resolutions, motions, communications or other proposition shall be referred without debate to the appropriate committee and only acted upon."
Well, he's explaining his ruling, okay? But I think they missed a vote. They, Burke appealed his ruling as to whether or not a motion to adjourn would be in order.
That's right. So, the question is, was the chair's ruling correct? The vote was no, it was not.
That's right, but then Henry never.
That means they do not entertain the motion to adjourn and they go back to Nateris's motion. I think they're still in line, they're still corrected.
Would be in order.
And now the question is.
Well, Henry, Henry never made the motion to adjourn.
That's right, because they had the.
Here we go again. Now, this is whether or not this matter goes to Rules Committee.
Rush.
And if it doesn't go to Rules Committee.
Timothy Evans.
We're gonna get a vote, I think.
Sawyer, Beavers.
Ironically.
Caldwell.
Gene Sawyer's chairman of the Rules Committee.
Verdoliak, Huel.
He'd have to conduct a hearing.
Madrick, Burke.
There is nothing like this town, is there?
This is, I have been here. You were saying earlier, no, I've never seen anything like this in all my years of covering City Hall.
Chicago has a growing reputation for good theater, but none as good as this.
None.
None.
Dick, how many years have you been covering City Hall? About sixty now?
Seventeen years.
Henry.
Sixty today.
Yeah.
Solis.
Actually, not even when Daley died was there anything like this because they finally managed to cut the deal. Wilson Frost stood up and said, "I'm not gonna be a part of this. I'm not gonna commit suicide." He took the finance chairman's post. And, and as you know, Michael Blandic was elected mayor for six months, though. That's the difference. And then they had a special election.
Banks, Giles.
Isn't there an old adage that if you like sausage and democracy, you shouldn't watch either one being made?
Yes.
Lorino, O'Connor.
It may be the lesson we're learning here tonight.
And this may be a little more sausage than democracy at this point. I'm not sure.
Hanson.
Never mind.
LeVar.
The.
Schiller. Schulter.
We're up to forty-eighth ward now.
Yep.
This is the way it works. And one thing that's exciting about watching it happen like this is the discussions that it will kick off around the city and the learning process for all of us about what happens.
Here's the, here's the appeal.
Thank you. The yeas are twenty-one, the nays are twenty-seven. Therefore, the ruling of the chair was not sustained and the resolution is open for discussion.
But here comes a new challenge.
Alderman Nateris's resolution.
Here comes a new challenge, however.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. On a point of clarification, simply want to have the record reflect that in spite of the fact that there was no motion to suspend the rules, which requires a two-thirds vote, that the chair has now been overruled and has had to declare that this matter is before the body. And I'm bringing to the president's attention that the kind of resolution that is before us right now was considered back on December twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-six. And on that occasion, there was specifically a motion made to suspend the rules for the temporary consideration of the resolution. And that motion on that day was made by Alderman Burke. I want.
Well, this is a legal point.
I want the record to show that we are now deviating from the precedent which was established at that time. And once again, Mr. President, I would call on this body to permit the president to rule correctly that this matter is not officially before this body until there is a motion to suspend the rules which has been sustained by a vote of two-thirds of the members of this body.
Now, that's to let the lawyers make some money. That's to preserve the legal argument.
The state council has not sustained that ruling. Alderman Nateris.
As a matter of discussion and explanation, this declaration is a declaration. It is not an ordinance. It is not an order. It is not a resolution. It's a declaration that was taken and found on page three hundred and twelve of the Illinois Revised Statutes. That's why we are presenting it today. If you read the contents of the declaration, it sets out simple rules of procedure within which to proceed. And therefore, since we had, it's before the body now. We have another chance to take a crack at it. I ask that it be passed by a roll call vote. I ask that it be passed by a roll call vote.
Okay, Alderman. Alderman Bloom.
Mr. President, unless Alderman Evans has a response to that point, I would like to speak to the matter. But if Alderman Evans has a response. And then I yield to Alderman Evans.
Alderman Evans. Mr. President, the rule that I referred to that requires the consideration that I suggested specifically includes all communications or proposition.